Okay, it is five thirty one. We got to get this show on the road. Okay. All right. Good evening of everyone. It is Tuesday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. Wow, the month flies by. And this is the regular board meeting of the Adalanto Elementary School District. This is our call to order. The time is now five thirty two. Can we please take roll?
Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, present. Quorum is established. Moving on to one point zero four, Pledge of Allegiance. If you could, please stand and put your right hand over your heart.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My chair is so high, my legs swing. I feel like a kid. Just saying. That's what I'm trying to adjust. Okay, moving on to two, adoption of the agenda. Agenda two point zero one for proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any tonight.
Okay, thank you. Two point zero two, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Eckes, I motion.
And can I get a second, please?
Webster, I second. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
And Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero. Okay, so we go on to three special recognitions. We have a student presentation from Columbia Middle School.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and community this evening. I'd like to call up Ms. Kristi Phillips, and we're having a presentation from Columbia Middle School about their ASB program. And so we also have some wonderful people in the audience that will be joining her on this. And we're excited to have them here this evening.
One of our presenters, unfortunately, Mom didn't get off to work until five, so we were hoping she would come in any minute here. I think she's walking in, so please give us just a second. There she is. I'm Ms. Phillips, I'm the Assistant Principal at Columbia Middle School, but this is actually not my presentation. It's a presentation of our ASB officers, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them, because this is all about them tonight.
Good evening Superintendent Kraus, Cabinet, President Benz, trustees and visitors. My name is Trinity King. I am the president for ASB at Columbia Middle School. This is Angelita Gonzalez, our Vice President, and Analia Lopez, our Secretary. Sadly, our Treasurer couldn't be here today because of personal reasons, but we're still going to go on with her. You might be asking, what is ASB at Columbia Middle School? Well, ASB is a group of dedicated students made up of all grades, sports, and clubs, who strive to do anything to better our school and our environment. This student organization is established to govern finances, act to govern finances, organize events, and represent the students of Columbia Middle School. The funds raised by the student organizations, class, sports, and clubs are called ASB funds. Each class, sport, and club have their own ASB account. ASB funds represent an opportunity for students to not only raise money, but to also learn the principles of operating a small business and learn leadership skills throughout life. ASB is constantly making contributions to the communities, to the community of Columbia Middle School, and to their fellow students of the school. Within the limits of our law, within the limits of the law created by the district and the state. ASB is a principal student government body on campus headed by four officers, President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer, who are governed by the entire student body. The leadership class consists of ASB officers, class officers, and accepted applicants. We ask for applicants to be involved in either sports or club on campus to help improve different events. All of Columbia Middle School dances and school activities are organized by ASB. The purpose of these events are to unify the school, raise school spirit, and provide a break from academics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Angelita, the ASB Vice President at CMS. Some of the things we're going to discuss today are the activities of ASB, which include dances, lunchtime activities, Spirit Week, and good end-of-year activities, as well as ASB leaders' conferences.
Good evening. I'm Analia Lopez, the ASB Secretary at Columbia Middle School. The ASB dances are organized in such a fashion that we're able to have an actual DJ with music. We have plenty of dancing and a snack bar that includes a variety of snacks, including drinks. I'm going to be discussing our lunchtime activities, which include Kona Ice Game Days, where we have all different kinds of games, and also Music Day. All of these things are usually close to, if not onstage, in front of our quad, and we have a great time interacting with all of our peers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Viper Store. Our Viper Store is also ran by ASB. We only accept the Viper Books, which is used as a currency to buy stuff and also collect stuff from the Viper Store. Students also get Viper Books for attendance and PBIS in general.
Spirit Week is a week where students can dress up according to the theme of that day. This is a great way to show school spirit. Our last Spirit Week included a Disney Day, Anything But a Backpack Day, and even a Twin Day. Coming up is going to be our Halloween Spirit Week, which will end with Book Character Day. We would love all of you to come join us.
Eighth grade end-of-year activities include field trips, grad night, which this year happens to be at Universal Studios, and eighth grade formal dance, and also promotion itself. We're super excited to say farewell to our eighth graders moving on to high school.
Our ASB Leadership Conference is on October seventh. And if all of you approve it, we will be going to the Leadership Conference, and we will be learning the new leadership model, which will include the President, the Vice President, our Secretary, and our Treasurer. At this conference, we are excited to learn how to ensure that our ASB programs run smoothly at Columbia Middle School. Thank you all for listening to our presentation about how ASB is ran at Columbia Middle School. I'm Trinity King, the President.
I'm Angelita Gonzalez, the Vice President.
And I'm Analia Lopez, the Secretary.
That concludes our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, can we take a group picture, please? Trustees?
I was gonna, just about to say, after I wanted to say to all of you how proud I am of our student ASB and this presentation in general. They were given very short notice, and they put this together over the last couple days. So I just want to say thank you to our ladies, as well as all of our ASB at Columbia Middle School. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Trustees, we'll start at the end of that. That's okay, La French?
Okay.
Okay. Your mic.
Hello?
There we go.
Okay. Okay, I want to say thank you for that presentation. I want to be involved in ASB. Thank you to the President, the Vice President, and the Secretary. Thank you for supporting Columbia. Thank you for being involved. You guys are making a change at your school. I'm so proud of you. And if I have anything to do with you going to the Leadership Conference, you will definitely be there. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, and I need to come and visit the school a lot more. And when I do, I do want to stop by and see you girls and visit you and maybe take a tour or see what you're doing. Very interesting, and I'm really glad you're stepping up and doing this. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of responsibility, but it shows your character, and I think that's great. So thank you.
I want to start by saying that I am blown away by the courage you ladies have leading your school, having those leadership capabilities is the future of just about everything. So I want to tell all three of you, congratulations on your spots. Congratulations to the President, the Vice President, and the Treasurer. And I can't wait to see where you ladies go. So have a great night, and thank you for your presentation.
And I concur with my fellow trustees. I'm really amazed at the leadership as young as you are. And I only see you just striving for greatness in your careers. I'm so proud that you are part of Columbia, and I know that you're going to take that school to another, a whole different level. And again, I'm so looking forward to voting on your Leadership Committee in your conference coming up. I don't think we've ever done that before, send students to a Leadership Conference, ASB Conference. My granddaughter was a part of ASB in high school, so I know that you will continue with this in high school. So congratulations, and keep up the good work. And parents, teachers, Ms. Phillips, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I want to say you represent your school very well. You have set the bar so high. Those who come behind you are going to have to work extra hard to even meet it. If I was your mom, I would be super proud with my head being about this big, and I couldn't fit, you know, it'd be too heavy. I must be proud. I know we're proud that you are there representing the school and creating a positive environment for yourselves, as well as your classmates. And thank you for coming, parents. Thank you so, so much for bringing them. We do appreciate it very much. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we go on to closed session. We will be taking items four point zero two and four, two four point zero zero five. Let me see. Now we're going to go on to five, public testimony. Moni before closed session, five point zero zero one, public comment period is for closed session items only. Do I have a representative from ADTA who wants to speak on closed session? Oh, no, I thought you were going to speak, Mr. Han, on closed. Okay, okay. Do I have a representative for CSCA?
CSCA did list a item, but it's really for open session, Madam President. But I'm not sure if the, Mr. Sinatra, do you know if there's a representative for CSCA to talk about any other items for closed session?
No, okay. And do we have any speakers for closed session?
We did have a public speaker request for a closed session item, but the topic would have to also be spoken about in open session.
Okay, so we're going to have to hold that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, going on to six, recess to closed session. Can I get a motion?
Eckes, I motion.
Okay, and can I get a second? I had a second from Turner. Can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero. The time is now five forty eight. Okay, so let's go ahead and have a call to order. The time is now seven four twenty two. Can you please take roll?
Yes. Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, present. Quorum is established. Moving on to a closed session report. Eight point zero one, an announcement of reportable actions taken during closed session. We do have one. The Board of Trustees has unanimously gave the interim superintendent direction to submit the approved KYA payment applications to the county for processing and payment for the shade structure project. And that one's done. Okay, going on to nine, public testimony. Do we have a representative from ADD, ADTA?
Yes, we'd like to call Mr. Brian Han to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Han, and welcome.
Good evening, Madam President Benz, distinguished board members, Superintendent Kraus, Mr. Moran, Dr. Doisan, esteemed colleagues, and our committed community stakeholders. My name is Brian Han, and I serve as a Vice President of the Adalanta District Teachers Association. I come here this evening to remind you of the many wonderful lessons being delivered in our classrooms throughout the district. And I'd also like to continue our conversation about striving for the gold standard in everything we do as teachers, classified personnel, and administrators in the Adalanta School District. As a reminder, the gold standard that I am describing represents the delivery of the very best service to the clients, which in our case would be the students. The gold standard means that we are also delivering somewhat of a wow factor in everything that we do. In order to deliver this, we must be able to properly communicate with our students and parents and learn about them as individuals. We must be able to deliver a world-class education to our students using the facilities and resources that we have been provided and/or personally purchased to enrich their experience. As teachers, we strive to deliver nothing less than the gold standard experience for our students district-wide, but have encountered some hiccups or roadblocks which have stood in the way as of late. While we recognize that we are all interconnected, it's not just teachers, it's not just classified personnel, and it's not just administrators. It's all of us who are what we call AESD. And it will take all of us to eliminate any and all of the obstacles that stand in our way. We believe that our biggest challenge collectively is to overcome the filling of all of the open positions that currently exist in the district as soon as possible. Additionally, we need to ensure that our substitute pool is adequate to cover most absences on any given day at any and all sites. Teachers at Columbia have been pleading for their science workbooks and other instructional resources to aid them in being able to have half a chance of delivering the gold standard for their students. Teachers throughout the district have been asking for edible manipulatives, for example, like cereal. Now, the teachers are already purchasing this, but they're looking for a way that might be, where it might be able to be purchased by the district or through some fund, you know, at the site or district level. Because the edible manipulatives obviously appeal to our student population. They enjoy learning place value and other exciting things in math with edible manipulatives. Chromebooks have also become a battle cry at many of our school sites, too. The lack of Chromebooks is impacting student testing schedules and other instructional programs that are extremely beneficial to our students. The need for speech therapists has also been a rally and cry at some school sites as well. While we recognize that many of these concerns can be addressed with financial resources, we are also wondering what has happened to our SIR funds? Is it possible to have this money divided up among the sites, or is there another plan for it? While we realize there are many challenges that need to be addressed, you're not alone. We're all in this together. If we revive and/or implement a collaborative culture on every campus, we can solve almost any problem that will arise. I would also like to thank Mr. Kraus and Mr. Moran for their effort and dedication with trying to resolve and find solutions to some of the issues that have been raised during the past few weeks as well. In closing, let us not just preoccupy ourselves with problems, but rather occupy ourselves with finding the solutions that need to be found. Through our mutual desire to establish a collaborative culture district-wide, AESD will have the opportunity to shine as it delivers the gold standard to every stakeholder on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a representative from CSCA?
Yes, Madam President, we have Ms. Diane Lynn, who's on Zoom. Mr. Sinatra, if you can ask Ms. Lynn to unmute herself, and we welcome Ms. Lynn.
Ms. Lynn, you can unmute now.
Hello, I'm sorry, it took a minute. First of all, well, good evening, President Benz, trustees, Mr. Kraus, Cabinet, classified staff, certificated staff, and all others attending this meeting.
Hold on, Ms. Lynn, we're having a hard time hearing you. Mr. Sinatra is going to try and fix it.
Oh. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll start all over again. Good evening, President Benz, trustees, Mr. Kraus, Cabinet, and classified staff, certificated staff, and all others attending this meeting. First, I want to say I agree with everything that Mr. Han has said. Thank you, Mr. Han. I wanted to say that I had the pleasure of attending our Classified Job Fair on September seventeenth, which was hosted by Mesa Linda Middle School. Thank you Mesa Linda Middle School and staff for allowing us to be there. It was so nice to see the applicants applying. There were a little over a hundred who applied. President Benz was present as well, and thank you for attending. It meant a lot having you attend. It was a great turnout, and our Personnel Department did an outstanding job, as well as other staff from the District Office. CSCA had a table, and we were happy and eager to let applicants know about our union. Present for CSCA was Kimma Bigliano and Jennifer Gomez, I mean, excuse me, Jennifer Gonzalez and myself. Kudos to Mr. Moran and his staff for the huge event and allowing this event to happen. Hopefully, our open positions will be filled, and we will have subs available when needed. Now, time is of the essence in getting the references checked, so we can have qualified employees start as soon as possible. It's been a long time coming. We also had a visit from Trustee Webster at George Magnet School. It was so nice seeing her and allowing us to showcase our wonderful students and staff and our beautiful school. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then.
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Teresa Berias to the podium. We'd like to welcome her up this evening. Welcome, Ms. Berias.
Hi, I just want to offer some appreciation for the brevity of closed session tonight. It was nice to not have a very long wait. I'm sure it's tedious for y'all to be in long negotiations and discussions as well. And I also want to express appreciation for the Executive Cabinet for all the work that you've done at Columbia in support of our administrative team, as there has been a lot of tumult there. As previously mentioned, Columbia is experiencing a lot of issues between our classes not having all the right books or all the books that they need, having frequent internet outages. So our kids can't actually use the technology and the tools that they're supposed to be to actually facilitate their learning. It's really concerning that our kids are missing out. And I just want to raise these issues and make sure that this is something the board is aware of that our kids are losing out on the educational and instructional time. On top of that, I want to find out more about what we do with our kids about tech and social media literacy because you know, some of us parents have found out that there are some Instagrams of Columbia kids fighting videos of our children fighting on campus. There are Instagram accounts that it's almost like the early days of Facebook that it's supposed to be a ranking system of who's cuter and who's not. And these are children. It's so deeply disturbing that those kinds of accounts exist. So I would love to know because our kids have a life skills class in middle school, and I would love to know if tech literacy and social media safety are a part of that curriculum. And if they are not, I would urge the the board and the the executive cabinet to consider embedding that within that curriculum because the internet is still a big and sometimes dangerous place. So I would hope that we as leaders and the people steering our children's lives are offering our kids the tools to keep themselves safe. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. And now on on the Zoom meeting, we'd like to call Mr. James Nye. If Mr. Sinatra could ask Mr. Nye to unmute themselves and welcome Mr. Nye.
You may unmute now. Thank you for having me. I'm a law student from Wake Forest in North Carolina, and I'm in an education law class and as part of my curriculum for the semester, I've been instructed to attend any school board meeting from across the country, so I ended up picking this one. So I wanted to just take one minute to talk about the experience that I kind of witnessed when I was an undergrad. And it was computer education and how I think it's really important for kids even from a really young age to get uh, basic skills with computer skills and computer science. I know at the elementary level, there's only so much you can do with rudimentary skills, but it can really go a long way and the earlier you can start, the more productive it can be long term. I don't want to take up any more time than that, so I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you. And now we would like to call and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, Ms. Karen Surian to the, uh, welcome her on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra, if you can ask Ms. Surian to unmute and welcome.
Be unmute now.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. As James, I am also here from one of our assignments from school and we just kind of wanted to see a little bit how you guys operate and how kind of like the cadence of the school board meetings. And my topic today is about the importance of the arts within elementary age children or students. I believe that there is as important as computers and technology is, especially the STEM areas, the arts lately have been relegated into a less of an important area that we are emphasizing and it is very important for me to use art as a way to help develop all the soft and soft sorry, those my notes, sub skills that kids are not exposed in a regular curriculum. It also provides historic historical context and it helps promote communication, motor skills, drawing and verbal and verbal skills. So I think that we should incorporate art in therapy settings or even in just a regular curriculum as important as any other type of area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we now would like to welcome Ms. Michelle Walden, Mr. Sinatra, if you could welcome Ms. Walden and ask her unmute. Welcome, Ms. Walden.
You may unmute now.
Good evening, board. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak today. Last board meeting, the water quality at Columbia Middle School was discussed where I think some very misleading statements were made. We may have thirty-three drinking fountains on campus, but the majority of those fountains, especially that our sixth graders have access to, the normal kids don't have access to. Some are in classes, some are in other rooms, other rooms that the kids don't have access to. What I want to know is how many water fountains can a normal student access if they walk outside of a classroom? That that's what we need to know. The other thing I'd like to bring up is why are we selling waters in our cafeterias for fifty cents for the eight ounces? And then a dollar for sixteen ounces? Why are we making a profit off of water? Okay, these kids need access to water. It's I I find that absolutely ridiculous. One of my students needed a fork. They went in there to get a fork and was told that it would be twenty-five cents. At Columbia, we currently have four teaching positions open. One out on medical and two who are waiting for H R. That's currently seven classes that every day needs a sub or a long-term sub. We are supposed to have two counselors, but we only have one that comes to work every day. The other person is just someone's name. They have not been at our site for over a year, but the name stays on and our one counselor does the job that honestly takes six people to do. We are also down to one admin with knowing no one saying when or if they will be returning. For the last three weeks, we have had a revolving door of people from the district office and from borrowed principals. Okay, major discipline issues have been mishandled, leaving staff feeling unsafe. Because of this, staff and students don't know what's going on at our school. Staff was invited by Mr. Kraus to a volunteer voluntary meeting for an update on what's going on. This meeting was scheduled on Friday morning from eight twenty to eight thirty, and school starts at eight forty. We got a whole ten minutes. Mr. Moran was sent there and said that he'd been sent to give us an update. We were literally told nothing, just that it's all confidential and we really don't have a timeline. We'll be sending over different people to support you. But you know what? In the meantime, you guys can help us out because we had over sixty-five people call out sick today. There's no time for questions. This left our staff frankly mad, mad that ten minutes was all we were given, mad we couldn't ask ask any questions, mad that we were called in for nothing, and mad that no one seems to care. Columbia is needs help.
I think, thank you.
That is all the comments this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. We 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 move move on to ten cabinet cabinet reports.
Yes, thank you very much. So this evening I would like to start with Dr. Dwyer's on and she'll start and then we'll move to Mr. Rand and I'll take up the the end.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, our A E S D staff and community. I'm excited to share some highlights from our academic services division this evening. So later on this evening, I look forward to sharing two brief presentations with you on attendance enrollment and also an L cap update. We also have our yearly public hearing for our sufficiency of textbooks. I want to say that we have to do that public hearing yearly by the eighth week of school. I'm happy to report that we do have all materials. I did hear about the science workbooks. Those we we were working with our publishers. We had a flood at the school and had to reorder those science, but all materials we have access to online and all of our schools, all of our students have the access to those. So we're excited about that coming up later on. We also held our first series of parent engagement meetings. We started last Tuesday. We're very excited about that. We held our first D LAC meeting of the year. This is our district English learner advisory council. And these are representatives from each school site who come and they take that information back to their site-based ELAC, but all are welcome to attend. So the focus of that first meeting was election of officers, but really what is D LAC and how do we move forward? So we want to make sure we are we are in compliance moving forward with our parent engagement committees. Mesa Linda hosted our first L cap stakeholder meeting, so we were very excited about that. We had our guest presenter, our academic service coordinator Rebecca Bunch, where she focused on our climate and culture plan. So a piece of that really digging into the mental health supports that are available to our students. So we look forward to actually this Thursday coming up is our district advisory council at Braddock Elementary, and that's from five thirty to seven. It's typically open to our DAC officers, but again, all are welcome. We welcome the feedback from all of our community. Our team is finalizing our October seventeenth professional development day, so we are so thankful to the board for approving those contracts with our vendors. We have everything from core early literacy focus. We have math focus coming in. We have E L D S E L technology, and we are excited to offer special sessions for our P E teachers this year moving forward. So we have truly something for everyone. So our Hope Academy officially begun this week with students. We're off to a fantastic start. I want to give a big thank you to our two teachers, Deborah Fernandez and Roma Flores. We're just excited to offer this alternative setting for our students. We invite the board to come and see it in action over here right next door in our backyard at Adelanto Elementary School. But we are excited for our students and teachers in that program. All of our I S P and Hope teachers attended the Edgenuity training. And so we're thankful to the board as well for the approval of this digital program, which is really going to support our students in these alternative learning settings. So we're their teachers are very over the moon and just excited about that. Um, SART process has begun. So first rollout of those SART letters. SART is School Attendance Review Team, and any student with three or more absences up to this point is receiving a letter coming up. So a big thank you to Brenda Holt and Michael Barrett for getting those letters printed. We print them centrally, we mail them out, and then we'll continue to see that process we have every month to make sure that we are holding students accountable and families accountable. We need our kids in school to learn. So big thank you to our teams for for helping with that. Uh, we had administrator designee training this past week. We want to make sure that our teachers in charge and anyone who has to help us out from time to time when administrator may be off campus understands what the the rules are, what's the legal compliance for those as far as discipline and such. So I want to thank to Carol Coburn for holding those. We have one more this coming Thursday, so they could choose which one. And lastly, we've had informational meetings last week and this week for two big events coming up later in the year. We have Science Fair and we also have our district-wide spelling bee coming, so we are really excited about those. School sites are eager and we look forward to sharing more information about those coming up soon.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Moran for some human resources updates.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, Board President, trustees, district colleagues, colleagues and community members. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share some human resource items. So first, let me begin with our classified job fair that took place on Saturday, September seventeenth at Mesa Linda. I would like to thank my H R team and several other district staff who supported the job fair. Dana Curtis, Alejandro Gonzalez, Iredy Peralta, Gloria Benavides from our office, Melanie as well. In addition, we had Brandon Lewis and Austin Duran from I T with Cecilia Escobar, Ivan Mateos, Maria Bamba, Rebecca Renteria, and Fernando Torres, who helped. We can't do without their help. It was a great turnout. We had a hundred and four people sign up using our digital U R code sign-in sheet. So they come in and they just use their phone to sign in and we capture their information. And so staff is following up with all of the candidates who applied and completed testing, and we're going to keep working hard to fill in all of those vacant positions as well as classified subpositions. And as as Miss Lynn from C S A shared, she she and several members of her team had a table there as well. So it was gave us also an opportunity to just chit chat with them while we saw candidates come in. I also shared at the last board meeting that H R would be hosting a one-day workshop for our interns and certificated employees on short-term staff permits or provisional internship permits or waivers. This workshop was held on September twenty-first and allowed and allowed for employees to receive information on topics that new teachers need to understand, curriculum resources, routines, management, and the credential requirements needed to obtain preliminary credentials. All participants loved the collaboration and found the time was well spent. Again, I'd like to thank Dana Curtis and Vicky Bell for organizing, preparing, and planning this important support for our certificated employees. Another orientation will be held on October fifth for our new PIPs and STIPS. The PIP stands for provisional intern permits, teachers on those permits, and the STIP S T S T S P stands for short-term permit. So again, I think all of that support's going to help them. Again, I shared this, I think, at the last several board meetings, but October first, our H R staff will be attending the Fall Festival at Hook Community Park, and we'll have a table there to promote our district as well as current job opportunities. And then we have several employees in our department attending AXA academies. So I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and Mr. Kraus for approving some very important AXA academies that we are attending. Dana Curtis and Alejandro Gonzalez are currently participating in the AXA Personnel Academy. This academy requires them to participate in seventy hours of professional learning over seven extended academy weekends for ten hours per weekend, held on a Friday evening and all day Saturday. These, sorry, these Personnel Academy covers specific themes including personnel development, Personnel Department organization, employee management, legal aspects, and staff development. I am participating in the Access School Business Academy. This academy requires me to participate in a hundred hours of professional learning over the ten over ten extended academy weekends for ten hours per weekend, again, Saturday and Sunday. I just completed my first weekend this past weekend. The the academy covers leadership, organization, and personnel relationships in business services, budget preparation and control, school finance, accounting, and auditing, and overall business operations. So again, thank you for the for allowing us and approving us to participate in these comprehensive personnel and business academies. And then finally, I'd just like to thank Dr. Dwyer's on and her team. I know they've had a lot of work with F P M, and there were some a lot of overlapping items with H R, so appreciate her leadership on that and her team as well for for assisting us. So thank you. And again, thank you for listening. This concludes our H R updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran and Dr. Dwyer's on, and good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I have a few updates I'm excited to share. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Han for coming up and and expressing his comments, and and he did make me hungry with those edible manipulatives. I actually looked them up as he was mentioning them to see what they were because I'd never heard of such a thing, but Mr. Han, I did want to let you know and all the staff out there that that sites have access to budgets. We don't want our staff having to dip into their pockets to pay for such items. So we if they are more than happy to reach out to the site administrators and let them know, we'd be more than happy to order whatever they may need. And those that already dipped into their pocket, we have a process of And those that already dipped into their pocket, we have a process of reimbursing them. And so they would just have to contact their site office and go through the procedures. But uh, you did make me a little hungry when I was looking up how they're used and what they are. So thank you for teaching me something about edible manipulatives this evening. I also wanted to say, when you mentioned the wow factor, I had an opportunity to visit classrooms over, over the, since school started, since August eighth. And it, it's just been an exciting time, whether it's with the uh members of the board or cabinet or myself, just going out there and interacting with the staff, watching the, the work that goes on with the students. And, and I've, I see so many great opportunities of learning going on, such as small group instruction uh at various sites. I've seen a lot of inquiry based instruction where they're asking the students for their feedback and, and asking what their opinion is on something. I see a lot of differentiation because we know that all of our students are not at the same level. Even though they might be in the same grade, they're not at the same level. But I've seen a great job amongst the staff of really making sure that all students are getting the information they need, whatever level they're on in the classrooms. And it's exciting to see that. Also, our technology is being incorporated uh with our Chromebooks. And we will look into those Chromebooks as well to make sure that our students do have Chromebooks across the board. Dr. Dwyson and Mr. Moran are already on that, that at the moment that we hear these items uh presented this evening. And also the uh technology literacy, that's also something that we will be looking at to make sure that we are helping our students understand the implications of social media. Uh, I had the opportunity to visit West Side Park today, and I want to say it's always great to get out to various sites. And I had to walk through the cafeteria and I always stop and, and, and Ms. Lynn and all of the CSEA members in our district are such valued members of our team as well. And I got an opportunity to interact with our uh cafeteria staff. There was always a great opportunity to interact with them, find out that the students were eating carnitas uh today. And the only students in the cafeteria were little TK students, about twenty of them. They were all there sitting so politely and quietly and lined up and, and so I just went to talk to them, right? And say, hey, how's the food? How you guys doing? And they just uh, so one of them gave me their milk and mister, can you please open this? And I said, okay, so I opened one milk and I thought, I thought that was the end of it. And they literally got out of their seats and they all came over to me with their little milk cartons. Mister, can you open mine? Mister, can you open mine? And I probably opened twelve milk cartons for these little TK students. It was such a, such a, you know, opportunity. So I became the milk carton opener today, but uh it was, it was great, great opportunity to be out there. And, and I really want to thank all of our child nutrition services staff for the hard work they do on a daily basis out there in helping make sure that all of our students are fed daily. So it's exciting to do that. Uh, also, I uh had the opportunity to go out to Columbia and I want to thank the ASB members that came up this evening. A great opportunity to showcase the work that's going on there. Columbia has a solid team of uh staff out there. I have had an opportunity and I'm sure they've seen me out there. Uh, walking around, supporting the office. I want to thank their front office. Uh, Ms. Medina, Ms. Rubio and Itza that work that front office and make sure that it's a well-oiled machine over there at Columbia in the front office. I know Mr. Moran said the opportunity to go over there, as you heard earlier, we've had many administrators helping support Columbia Middle School. And they have a great team over there, though, that we want to make sure that they're getting the necessary support that they need. And we will continue to do that uh as we move forward, as well as the students over there. So I just wanted to make sure that the staff at Columbia know, as well as all of our other sites, we're here for you. We're here to support you and anytime that you have any concerns, please, by all means, bring them forward through the uh administrative offices or feel free to email uh cabinet, myself or the board and let us know, because that, that helps us then be able to take steps to address those issues as quick as we can. We'd really like to stay on top of any issues that we're aware of and, and again, we want to support all of our sites. But thank you so much for the ASB uh members and Ms. Green who handles ASB out there. Uh, she's a teacher out there, does a great job at Columbia. I actually had the opportunity to chaperone one of their dance, the first dance of the year they had a few weeks ago. I did not go in the NPR. It was dark and scary and a lot of disco strobe lights and, you know, I didn't go in there, but uh the kids seemed to have a great time over there. And Ms. Green was there and helping to sell the snacks for the ASB, so uh great opportunity there. So looking forward to going back and participating in that and, and all of the many other opportunities that I know cabinet as well likes to get out there and the board uh to these uh sites to, to see what's really going on. And, and that's where the work is going on. And so I want to thank all of our teachers and classified staff uh for all the work that they do on a daily basis. It just, it means so much to the students, to their families. I talk to parents almost daily about uh how appreciative they are to the interactions that they have. And, and we are getting to that gold standard, Mr. Han, we will continue to do so every day. And, and we appreciate the collaboration with ADTA, CSEA and all of our uh staff and parents out there and our students. And so I encourage anyone to go visit our school sites and we welcome uh any opportunity or any invites that school sites have to let cabinet come out and see the work and also the board. We always try to keep the board informed of all of the great opportunities of events. For instance, there might be a barbecue coming up at Columbia this Friday. I don't know. But uh, I know CNS really does a great job at uh going around and doing events like that and helping to celebrate at our site. So excited about that. And then uh, lastly, I just want to, she's going to probably give me a dirty look, but Dr. Dwyson's birthday is tomorrow. So I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday uh because we won't be here, but she'll, she'll be here tomorrow. And just wanted to wish her a happy birthday, twenty ninth birthday for tomorrow, so. With that, that concludes my comments, Madam President and the board. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank, thank you. And I do believe we have another birthday coming up, right? Yeah, so there we go. All right, so let, let's go on to a, a, a lev- Levin. Um, govern- governing board mem- members reports. And I'm going to start with trustee Webster. Okay, is that just because I actually typed it out tonight and we can keep our sanity?
Uh, okay, good evening all and thank you all for being with us tonight. A few things I wanted to comment on is last Friday, I got to see a bunch of schools. It was great to get out and be a part of some really great Friday activities. I got to see Mr. Wilson over at Eagle Ranch. Just an amazing culture between staff and students. I really appreciated um the respect from all the little ones. It's, it's beautiful to see how excited they get when they see him walk through the school. Um, I was able to attend Mesa Linda's pep rally. A lot of fun. I got to learn more about their Ron Clark program and how it incorporates the students, putting them in these little houses. And I really appreciated the involvement the students got uh during that pep rally and how pumped up they were. So I, and I, I, I was excited to be a part of it. So I do want to say thank you, Dr. Cameron, for letting me kind of pop in and rain on that parade. It was a lot of fun, though. Just saying. Um, I really loved walking through Morgan Kincaid. That was my first walk through and it was some of the most amazing, like, um. How would I say that? I, I would have to say it was really nice to see how the kids, the teachers. Um, they were excited, like these kids were excited about their classes. So I, I really was encouraged to see that. Um, Mr. Rizzo, always a pleasure being over and seeing you. I got to spend some amazing time with our George family. I got to see the doors and the hallways dressed up for their, um, like escape school night. Cannot wait for their next event. I really hope I can make that one. Um, where else? El Mirage, we got to go out there and find out more about the Future Business Leaders of America program. I'm really excited to see what more these students have in store for this year. Where else did I go? Oh, and lastly, I promise, Gus Franklin, I got to see Ms. Hernandez's third grade class launch their like homemade or built airplanes in the uh NPR. So that was a lot of fun learning how to launch airplanes. I'm not going to lie. Next, I would like, oh, we haven't heard this yet, but um I am excited for an array of meetings the district will be hosting upcoming months. I want to encourage all to come out. We as a district must work together to bring all of us forward. Having parent, teacher, student and community input always allows us to provide more community driven development for our district. So please consider marking these dates. I believe you can find them on the website, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, that is correct.
Um, you can find these calendars online and I do encourage all of our um community to come out. Let us hear what you have to say. And to, and tonight, I want to extend happy birthdays to Mr. Kraus and Ms. Dr. Dwyson. You guys really don't look a day over twenty nine. So beautiful. Um, I hope everybody drives home and have a great night. Safely.
All right, thank, thank you. Uh, tr- trustee Ek- Ekis?
Oh, I yield back my time tonight. Thank you.
Okay, trustee La French.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Uh, your, your mic.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity, week before last, to go and visit uh Columbia. I had a really nice time in um Mrs. Green's class. Her class was so well, everyone was engaged. Um, they all had different things going on. I also learned that during their dance, um, a child's scooter was taken. And Mr. Kraus got in his car and retrieved that scooter and brought it back. I was so proud of him. That he would take the time out to get in his car, drive around and find this scooter that a grandmother had purchased and the little girl was very hurt. And he brought the scooter back. I also went to visit Mesa Linda. I went to base, visit Mesa Linda. I saw um Mr. Hind there. I had a wonderful time over at uh Mesa Linda. Um, being able to talk to teachers, talk to students. Um, I also visited a um um, the break room. The break room was where a lot goes down, a lot of snacks, a lot of eating, but good conversation. Um, I was able to speak to a couple of people that said Mesa Linda was doing great. She was excited and she was happy about this school year. Um, one of the teachers. I was also able to go over and visit um Morgan Kincaid. Um, I think it was Morgan that I went to, or I think it was Mesa, Mesa Linda I went to that had a computer class. I learned a lot just in a short period of time about computers and how the children use them. And um, you know, where we're going with technology. That was over at uh Mesa. But for Morgan, Morgan always holds a soft spot because I, that's where my children went. Morgan is always has an open, warm feeling there. I always enjoy the walkthrough at uh Morgan. Let's see. I came with a plan this time. I also know that sometimes that it's kind of redundant, right? People say that we always say thank you, but I truly mean that, you know, that I want to say thank you to the teachers and the support staff and our admin staff or their commitment to our students. So even though it sounds like the board says that every time in our hearts, we truly mean it. Thank you. Have a nice one.
Thank, thank you. Trust, trustee Turner?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending our meeting tonight. I want to um just say thank you to academic services for your report tonight. It's always a pleasure to hear what's going on in our, in our district and your staff. And also Mr. Moran um for the excitement of our job fair. But uh classified, not classified, yeah, classified. Um, it's always wonderful to hear that, you know, we are offering jobs to our community and also allowing our current employees to uh apply for a better position. And, and Mr. Kraus, um, what were you today? Milk opener today?
I was the milk opener at West Side Park in the cafeteria.
You know, when, when talking with you and your report on your visits to our campuses, I always hear the excitement and in your voice and talking with the students and the staff. And, and I really appreciate that. And, you know, we're doing great things and to our teachers and our staff. Um, I'm so excited about this school year. Um, there's a lot of great things happening. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend Mesa Linda Middle School um for the celebration of teachers from our county superintendent, Mr. Ted Alejandre, and also the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. They honored eight teachers, was it eight teachers with two hundred dollar um certificates in, for them to spend the money the best way they saw fit. And that was absolutely exciting to see that. Uh, my teachers were really excited about that opportunity. Mr. Alejandre took pictures with students and the, the teacher's classroom, the entire classroom was there in attendance to see their teacher being honored with that, with that certificate. I also had the opportunity to attend um the first LCAP meeting in trustee area one, which is my area at Mesa Linda Middle School. We didn't have much audience, physical audience participation, but we did have over twenty, twenty some odd people join us via Zoom. Um, the information, again, Dr. Dwyson touched on it a few moments ago, was very informative and I'm really excited to see the different programs, like the mental health of Mrs. Coburn and, and academic services department, uh Ms. Bunch. And the assistance, administrative assistance that turned out to support this project, it was amazing. And I'm looking forward to attending um the LCAP meetings in the future. According to our schedule, there will be LCAP meetings every single month. And parents, we need your participation because it's, it is a time for you to let the district know what you would like to see in our, in our district, at your school site uh for your student. Um, the LCAP is a local control funding formula. That's the, that's the, our funding. LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula. The LCAP is the plan to spend our money and how our money is to be spent. And you hear us talking about that, but it's really important that you come out and give your feedback as to what you would like to see for your children. Um, education, also activities, and no one parent mentioned the arts. And I'm really excited to see that on our agenda, I, I will be pulling it that we are um looking at that, because it's more to education than reading, writing and arithmetic. You know, the kids need some fun and the arts play an important role in the development of our students. Lastly, I would like to um acknowledge our, our security that's here at our board meetings. You know, I, I failed to do that last board meeting and I told, he said, you know, and he said to um you have an opportunity to do it at the next meeting and I'm taking that opportunity to acknowledge and we appreciate you being here. No matter how late the meetings are and walking us to our cars to make sure that we get into our cars safely. And so I, I really appreciate you guys being here and also our IT staff, you know, you keep us up and running. You know, and we appreciate that. And to my fellow board members. You know, I, you know, I, I really enjoy working with you, you know, and we get a lot of work done, even behind the scenes. So, and our administrative assistant, Xenia. And I know Sandra's not here tonight and thank you, Mr. Han, for your kind words. Every time you come to the podium, you acknowledge the district in a, in a most gratifying way and I thank you for that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Well, I really don't have much to share. You know, I've had my work and it's been a lot. I do intend to um vis- visit school soon on for Fridays. I, I did want to just men- mention that Doc, Dr. Dwyson and Mr. Kraus were accepted into a soup superintendent, ton- tenant program at U USC that on, only accepts twenty app applicants out, out of the dis- district. And we have two that are in there, which I think is commend- mendable. And I think, thank you because you're take, taking time after all the things you do. You're doing more. And I just want, want to thank you for all you, you do for, for our dis- district. Your um com- commit, commitment to our dis- district me means a lot. And to you too, Mr. Moran, I don't want to put, put you like, no, you were not in there, but we do appre- appreciate you all very, very much. I, I do think we have the best cap cabinet. Um, and everybody else said such great things. There's no way that I could top, top that, so I'm going to stop that so that hopefully we can get out of here on time. How about that? Okay, let, let's go on to number. Okay, let, let's go on to number twelve, pub- public here hearings and sun- sunshine per pro- proposals. Um, twelve point zero one, ac- academic ser- services, pub- public hea- hearing to approve resolution two one, twenty-two point twenty-three point zero, zero nine, su- suffici- efficiency of instructional mater- materials.
Do you want to do a description of this verse or just o- open it up?
Okay, so I'm go- going to op- open it up for the discussion at eight thirty, thirty-four. Do we have any discussion? Questions?
I have none.
Okay.
Not on instructional materials. I do want to make a correction on my trustee comments, though I mentioned Columbia Middle School. It was not Columbia. It was George Visual and Performing Arts that, um, this county superintendent attended. I'm sorry. Just want to say that because it's on record.
Okay, do we have any discuss- discussion about the agenda, Aida?
This comes every year. It's like an annual thing?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I'm happy then.
Okay, so I guess we will clo- close it up at eight thirty, thirty-five. Thank you all. Now, do we have to motion? What's this motion thing here?
Yes.
Yes?
I motion.
Okay, we mo- motion to, to approve. So I get it from Ekis and I need a sec- second.
Webster, a second.
Thank you. Okay, we already had time for discuss- caution and there wa- wasn't it? So please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Ben.
Ben's, I. Mo- mo- motion passes five zero. Okay, we are go- going on to third, thirteen staff re- reports and presentations. Uh, thir- thirteen point zero one, act academic ser- services, LCAP update.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening, Dr. Doyzon will be presenting a local control and accountability plan update to the board and the community. Dr. Doyzon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kraus. Um, at this time, we're going to go ahead and pull up. We already did. Thank you, Mrs. Colburn. Uh, we're going to pull this up. So we are committed, um, in academic services to providing quarterly updates on our LCAP stakeholder um, engagement meetings and just LCAP in general. So we want to go ahead and give this brief update as to where we are at the beginning of this school year. So Local Control and Accountability Plan is a three-year plan that describes the goals, activities, services, and expenses um, needed to support student outcomes in alignment with our state and our local priorities. The LCAP provides opportunities for districts to share the stories of the how, what, and why we select the programs and services that we do to meet the needs of our community. So the funds detailed in the LCAP are specifically intended to support improving outcomes for students who are English learners, foster youth, and low income. So we have three goals within our LCAP and so, um, our three goals, um, are, the first is to increase student achievement. So we want to see gains for our students in the areas of English language arts, math, science, and social studies and/or history, um, with the focus on closing the achievement gap. So not only making sure that our students progress in their learning, but that achievement gap that exists between subgroups, we want to see that diminish, um, completely. So secondly, we want to provide every student with specific academic, behavioral, social, emotional, mental, and physical health supports to meet their individual needs. Um, these are in place to, we, we have student achievement listed first and then we have the different supports that are needed for the students to make sure, again, I keep, um, seeing this when I present, but we want to make sure that we're focusing on the whole child. So, um, our children are complex. It's not just the academics, but they, there are different supports that they need mentally, physically, and we want to make sure that those are in place so that they can focus on school. Lastly, our third goal involves our community, parents, and our family. So we want to make sure that they're informed, engaged, and empowered partners with our Adelanto School District to make sure that we support the learning and increase our student outcomes. So here are examples. These are the three goals and different things that are in place and we're putting more in place through the stakeholder engagement series that we have. Um, but under goal one, you'll see we have things like, uh, class size reduction, supplemental technology. We have professional development. Um, our AAs, which are, um, administrators specifically geared to help support instruction at school sites. We have it, school innovation, early childhood, engaging electives, and making sure that students have library and media access. That's, um, at school and also having, uh, um, access at home. Under goal two, we have music and art, physical wellness, transportation services. And these are our regular transportation services. These are transportation services that are above and beyond. So you'll, uh, field trips and things like that. These are the type of transportation services that we, um, are seeing under goal two. Also increasing counselors. So we would like to, um, and included, we received feedback trying to include more counselors at the elementary level to support our students in elementary schools, social, emotional learning, and then social workers. So we do have one social worker um, and we are looking to increase to add one more social worker, which is included in our LCAP. Um, under goal three, under family engagement, you'll see workshops, parent volunteers, and also events. So this is our engagement calendar. This is just kind of a brief overview to show you how we're increasing our, um, opportunities for our parents to be engaged this year. So at the beginning of the year, we began with the Parent Academy and Resource Fair, um, in which we were able to, uh, give out, uh, so many different resources, um, and that was working in conjunction with our community partners. Uh, backpacks, clothes, you name. I think there was just so many things I can't even remember. It was quite a bit. Um, and then additionally, you'll see these, uh, next couple of meetings being recurred all year long, most of them monthly. Um, this is our LCAP stakeholder engagement meeting, our DLAC meeting for our district English learners advisory council. We have our district advisory council, which is our DAC. Um, DAC is, um, at the school site, they have what are called their school site council. So at the school site council, at the site level, you will have your schools pick a designate to attend you there. That is their DAC representative. And so that is where they hear a lot about the logistics, the compliance, different laws. But it's important that as a district that we have a DAC to make sure that we are compliant, um, with state and federal programs. Additionally, our special ed committee, we have our community advisory council. We call that the CAC. In addition, we want to make sure that you're not just coming and our community isn't just coming to us, but that we are also getting out to you. So you'll see that, um, on our schedule, we have all of our trustee areas represented. We get to each trustee area multiple times this year. Um, different school sites. And then I think the only one that we have here at the district office is our DLAC because we do hold those, um, in the morning. So you'll see that we have the morning time, but typically our evening meetings start at five thirty to seven. Um, and so again, these are monthly. So this is just, the next two slides are an example. Uh, board, you do have this calendar, um, with you right now. But this is just an example of the rotation of our parent engagement meetings. Um, you'll see the type of meeting, the topic, the location, the date, and the time. Um, next slide. So you see Thursday actually is our, is our DAC meeting, but here the meetings for October, November, and December. November, December are shorter months, so we, we have less on those meetings. But, uh, this will, is located on our district website, um, and accessible. And so we will continue to publicize and make sure everyone knows, but it's important that we get the feedback of our community and, um, we're excited about, um, the start already. So that concludes our presentation on LCAP.
Thank you. Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, board, do you have an, any ques- questions or comments?
No questions, but I thank you for this calendar that has everything listed.
Trustee La French, thank, thanks you for the cal- calendar. Her mic, mic is off. You're very welcome.
It's a really pretty calendar.
Amazing.
Thank, thank you for the calendar because this keeps us informed for the whole year. This is great. I love it. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so now we're move, move, moving on to thir- thirteen point zero, zero two, act academic ser- services, attend- attendance, and enrollment presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and community. Again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Doyzon to give us an update on how our enrollment and attendance are doing.
All right, thank you. This is another commitment from academic services to the board to make sure you are updated, uh, quarterly as to how we're doing with attendance and enrollment. And so we know this is an area in which we are all watching closely to make sure, um, and see how we're doing as a district moving forward. So first of all, I just want to, um, take the opportunity that I have in front of me to thank our central enrollment center uh, for the work that they do in processing, uh, enrollments. Um, it's always, if, if you ever go by the enrollment center in the beginning of the year, it's usually standing room only, um, in the beginning, but our team, uh, is doing a phenomenal job. So Karen and, and the team in, in enrollment center. So as of right now, we have one enrollment center specialist. We have two clerks in there. Um, we processed about 1,365 new enrollments to the district this year so far. We're not done. We keep going. Uh, TK actually is full throughout the district, so, uh, we are excited about that. Parents are getting the word about TK and enrolling their students in TK. So our total enrollment is 7,727 students. That changes a little bit daily. And we've done, uh, radio, social media, and our schools also help us to advertise our district and the great things that we are doing here. So this is just a quick visual of our enrollment numbers by site. So you can have and see, um, exactly where we're at and where our students are at in the district. So this helps us to monitor um, if there are any new programs or classes or things that we need to put in place. So just a quick overview for you. So our next steps in the enrollment center are to continue to process the ease of enrollment for families. Continue to use our, uh, publication and advertisement platform. So radio, social media, our parent square. Um, we want to make sure that we're updating and we are actually in the process of updating all of our brochures. When you walk into the enrollment center, we want you to see the brochures of our schools and the wonderful things that they're doing. So you can look for those to be updated soon. We're working on that in collaboration with our school sites. We're also working on advertising for our choice schools and we're actually starting the application for our choice schools a little earlier this year in December. So we want to make sure that we get kind of get going full, so we know where our spots are. And so, uh, we actually just had a team meeting today and we're all on board with that. And then just a few slides on attendance. So some of the areas in which we look at attendance, attendance can be quite complicated when you're looking at the data. But we look at a daily attendance rate. We look at daily attendance by student group. We also look at chronic absenteeism, those students who are, um, just obsessively absent and try to figure out and pinpoint what's going on. We do home visits. We reach out with extra supports for our students and families. And we also look at enrollment. So those are just some of the various, um, ways, um, in which we disaggregate the data for, um, attendance. So I wanted to provide you from the first week of school, so the top being the most recent, just last week, all the way down to the first week of school. And so we're, we're really excited to report um, that our attendance is already trending upward from last year. So we're in the nineties, whereas last year we were in the eighties. And so we are trending upward. We continue to push. Um, our school sites are on board. We're sending messages out about attendance. You heard earlier in my comments, we're making sure we SART and SARB to hold, um, make sure that our families are held accountable for getting to school on time. And so this is really encouraging for us as we start the school year. So you also have another, um, it's a three-year plan. So our team developed a three-year plan to address and improve procedures and systems and attendance, um, which includes centralized attendance procedures and action plan. So what we did this year, um, really in a nutshell, is that we retrained every single school district on proper attendance and documentation procedures. And we monitor that because some of the times we find that our errors just are clerical errors. And so we've been through a lot the last few years, so we just wanted to start off fresh. And so we are happy to report that all sites have been trained. All administrators were also asked to attend that training so that they know what's going on. And additionally, um, Brenda Holtz, our, um, school attendance review officer, she personally went around and made sure all schools were trained in the SART and SARB process. So, and that was individually, she went around. So I just want to give a shout out to Brenda for her work and helping us to make sure we're compliant. Um, so, uh, schools are developing attendance awards and incentives. We do home visits. Um, we're communicating and providing resources to families as we see that there's a need. Um, because sometimes with these, uh, review teams, you do find that there's a need for the families. And so we want to make sure to address that. And then we're also committed to quarterly updates to the board so that you know, um, what's happening and what's going on and how we're doing. And so that concludes our, uh, brief update on attendance.
Okay. Board, do you have ques- questions or com- comments?
Uh, I'll make a quick comment. Um, I know how important, uh, perfect attendance is to many kids and families. So I'm kind of going to put it out there, a heads up that if the schools or the district can really honor the kids at the end of the year for perfect attendance, that really means a lot. It really, really does. So I don't know. I'm just going to throw that out there, but thank you.
Okay. And I, I, I just want, want to say how pleased I am that our per- percent- percentage has gone up where last year it, it was in the mid to low eight, eighties and now we're in the nine, nineties. That, that's a huge, huge D deal. So, you know, let's please keep, keep up the work, the good work. Okay, I go and thank, thank you for, for that.
Thank you.
Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen, adoption of the min- min- minutes, um, uh, approve as, uh, board, boardman minutes, approve as writ- written and ord- order filled reg- regular board me- meeting of September thir- thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Ekis.
Okay, I've got a mo- motion from Ek- Ekis and I need a second.
Webster, seconds.
Thank you. Do we have dis- discussion? Hearing none, call for, for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Ben.
Ben's, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to the consent agenda. We are ta- taking i- items fif- fifteen point zero, zero two through fifteen point two five. Does an, any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull fifteen oh seven.
Okay.
And fifteen twelve.
And fifteen twelve. And fifteen twelve. Does an any anyone else want wanna pull? Okay, hearing none. So we will be taking all i- items. Mine minus fif- fifteen point zero sev- seven and fif- fifteen point twelve. Can can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Ekis.
Ekis. And can I get a second?
Turner, second.
Thank you. Um, discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Right.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. All right, go going on to sixteen i- items re- removed from the consent agen- agenda. We first go to uh fif- fifteen point zero seven. Uh, at academic ser- services, approve the ad- addendum. To the ci- city of Vic- 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 Victorville contract to. And increase five thousand, five hundred third thirteen from the original con- contract. From June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred eight eighty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-one. Dollars and fifty cents to two hundred ninety-five thousand doll- dollars. Ninety-five ni- ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, we wanna mo- motion to approve. We need a mo- motion for discussion.
Motion to table.
To tape.
I second.
Motion to table. Do we want to discuss- discussion or just tape?
Yes, I would like to discuss this.
Okay.
The reason I'm requesting to table this is um the district had a contract with the city of Victorville for SRO. Um. What I would like to find out and is if in that original contract. With the city of Victorville, did it indicate that um they would revisit this amount? If after negotiations, because generally when the board approve a contract, that's the contract amount. Um, any changes, you know, if we agree to renew it for the next year would come up at that time. Not during the course of the of the contract. So I'm afraid that if we. Agree to amend this contract, will we be faced with other contracts for amendment? In the event that unions negotiate at a later date and then come back to us and say, well. Um, we negotiated a cer- a different amount. Now we would like to amend our contract. So I would like to know if that language is in the original contract. Uh, that states that we may be amending this agreement later after uh negotiations with the union. If not, then I I feel that at the time of renewal of the contract for next school year, then they can submit this. Increase in salary and benefits.
Yes, thank you for your comments. We will definitely uh have staff review this and get back to the board.
Okay, so we are ta- tabling this id- item. I have a mo- motion by trustee Turner. And a sec- second by trustee Web- Webster. Is there a- any other discussion? Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
This is to table, correct?
Yes.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Ekis.
No.
Trustee Benz.
Name. Mo- mo- motion pass passes three two.
Three two.
It passed.
Correct.
It's taped, tabled, yeah.
Three two. Okay, so now we are go- going on to fif- fifteen point twelve academic ser-. Services approval of contract with the Riv- Riverside, Anjo, Mono, and San Bern- Bernardino. Dino Rims Cal- California Arts Project for professional development. Around the arts and mu- music for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I need a mo- motion.
I motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Turner. I need a sec- second.
Ekis.
Got a se- second by Ekis. We're up, uh we're o- open for di- discussion.
I pulled this um because um during uh public comment period, someone mentioned um the need for arts and music. Um, in the school district, Dr. Dwyson touched on it with the LCAP. And I just wanted to reiterate that the board did approve this item, you know, for professional development. Uh, for our staff around this area. And and I'm really excited about that because our students do need. Music and art and, you know, extracurricular activities in order to be um. To educate the whole child. And so I'm really excited about that. So I just wanted to, you know, make it known because it was sitting in consent. That we are looking to um, you know, prepare our teachers in this area.
Okay. Is there an any o- other di- discussion?
Uh, I just wanna say I totally agree. Uh, we had music when I was in school. My kids didn't really get to get. A lot of music in their school. Um, but music was always a sta- a stable thing in the schools growing up. And it teaches you so much. It teaches you math. It teaches you concentration. It teaches you patience. It teaches you responsibility. I mean, I could just go on and on and on and on, but I just know that kids have talent. I know they wanna express their talents. And I mean, there are musicals out there. There's orchestras out there. Yeah, I mean, when you stop and hear somebody playing the violin, it just makes you feel so good. I mean, we need to bring back a lot of our old uh ways of doing things. And I just think the arts, music, everything is so important in a child's education. So I am really excited to see that we are looking into this. We're getting involved in it, and I will support it one hundred percent. So thank you.
Okay, uh, call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, let's go on to seven seventeen. Uh, po- policy introductions, updates, and read readings. Uh, sev- seventeen point zero zero one at academic ser- services. Adopt and approve the second read for board po- policy. Uh, fif- fifty-one, forty-one point fifty-two. And admin administrative reg- regulation. Fifty-one, forty-one point fifty-two for su- suicide prevention. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Ekis.
And I need a sec- second.
Turner, second.
Give it to Turner. We're open for di- discussion. Hearing, oh, okay.
I just wanna say I'm really excited for this board policy. Um, I'm glad that we. We are setting something in policy for such a a serious front. So, thank you.
Yes, I agree. It couldn't come at a better time.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of mental health out there with not only students, but adults, everybody. This is a very serious time, and I'm so glad that we have a policy on it, that we're acknowledging it. And that we're involved in it. It's extremely important. So thank you.
Yes.
And I totally agree. You know, the pandemic has caused a lot of stress on our on our families. And not only our students, but everyone, basically. And to have a policy that, you know, address this issue is very important. So thank you again.
Okay. Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Go going on to seventeen point zero two academic ser- services. Approve first read reading for board po- po- policy BP and AR sixty-one fifty-eight. Independent study. I need a mo- motion to to approve.
Ekis.
And I need a sec- second.
Webster, I second.
Okay, we're o- open for discussion. Okay, hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I motion passes five zero. Hey, for the new record. We are now on to eighteen point zero one adjournment.
Ekis.
I second.
I have some words I have to say now. No, just kidding. We are proud of you.
We cut the mic.
Let me go on. No, okay, um, can you please call for the vote?
No, we need discussion.
We need discuss- discussion. Okay, I don't appreciate. No, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero. The time is now nine oh five. Everybody, please have a won- wonderful night and thank, thank you ver- very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe next Tuesday.